As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here is tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned, the Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
I call to order this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors for a regular meeting. Good evening, Mr. Powell.
Good evening.
Would you please call the roll?
Ms. Drysonhour.
Here.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here. Any presentations?
Uh, no ma'am.
Public comment this evening?
Uh, no ma'am.
Well, next we have the consent calendar, which consists of the following items: amendment to the employment agreement of the general manager, and minutes adoption. Do I have a motion?
They're moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any public hearings?
No ma'am.
Board considerations. First is contract award, building envelope, technical support services. Mr. Powell.
Uh, this resolution is similar to the one you approved at your last Board of Supervisors meeting. An RFP was issued for a building envelope, technical support services. Six firms submitted proposals. Two were chosen as most fully qualified. Those were ECMS, Mid-Atlantic, and TAM Consultants. I recommend approval of the resolution authorizing the award of the building envelope, technical support services contract to ECMS, Mid-Atlantic, and TAM Consultants.
Any questions?
Motion for approval.
Very good. Ms. Powell?
Ms. Drysonhour.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye. Next is the authorization for leave payout and budget amendment.
Uh, this resolution is also similar to one that you approved at your last Board of Supervisors meeting, and also similar to one you approved last year. This resolution authorizes a leave payout option for JCSA employees. The maximum would be based on years of service as follows. Employees with up to 10 years of service would be eligible for a maximum of $3,000. Employees with 10 to 20 years of experience would be eligible for a maximum up to $4,000. And employees with 20 or more years of service would be eligible for a maximum of $5,000. The effective date would be December 28th. The estimated cost for JCSA, the maximum, would be $153,500, but it could be less based on the number of employees who choose to participate. Recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay. Any discussion or a motion?
Motion for approval.
Mr. Powell, please call the roll.
Ms. Drysonhour.
Aye.
Ms. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye. Board requests into directives. Anybody? Y'all good? Okay. You have an update for us?
Uh, just two quick things. Number one, for the viewing public, I just wanted to remind folks, this is the time of year to winterize your irrigation system. We had a lot of issues last year with irrigation systems freezing because customers had not irrigated them. So this year, we're going to be sending out a postcard, probably sometime in the next few days, to all of our irrigation customers, reminding them to winterize their irrigation system. So asking for customers' support in that effort. And then, secondly, just a reminder, the meeting tomorrow related to the grandfather grinder pump service agreements. So if more than two of you are planning to attend that meeting, you should continue your meeting tonight until 4:00 PM tomorrow.
And with that, I think we have more than two. So our meeting will continue until 4:00 PM tomorrow evening, the 15th.
That's correct. Here in this.
Here in this boardroom.
Here in this room.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope. That's it. Thank you very much.
We're good. Everybody's waiting for a gavel. We'll do that tomorrow. Mr. Hippel.
All right. Ready? I call this meeting, James City County Board of Supervisors, a regular meeting. The order on November 14, 2023, at 5:03 PM. Mr. Stevens, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Drysonhour?
Here.
Mr. Drysonhour represents the Jamestown District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District and is vice chair to the board. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District and is chair to the board. Sitting to my far left is Adam Kinsman, county attorney. I'm Scott Stevens, county administrator, and it's my pleasure to be clerk to the board.
Thanks, sir. All right. We'll have a moment of silence, and after a moment of silence, by the pledge leader, and our newly-elected Board of Supervisor Barbara Knoll will lead us in the pledge tonight. And so we'll ask you to come forward.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Here, I've got your little pen.
You're gonna need it, trust me.
You're gonna need this. This is a very expensive pen. Okay. Public comment. We'll go ahead and open up the floor for public comment. And our first speaker, Peg Borman. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Purse, Mr. Reineheimer, and Mr. Kinsman. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Peg Borman. I reside in 17 Settlers Lane in downtown Lightfoot, James City County. And I'm coming before you to talk a little trash today and give you some tips for the holidays. And speaking of trash, I was out on Friday afternoon with the Ruatan Club, picking up our spot on Centerville Road. That yielded four bags of trash in that small amount of place. Two bags of bottles, which totaled 86 liquor bottles. And two large pieces of trash, like something off an automobile, and that fiberboard chest of door stuff. That was a whole lot of stuff for a small amount of space. And I used my walker. And I walked down the back path and used that to pick up that roadside litter of cigarette butts. There was probably a half a bag of cigarette butts along there. But anyways, along Freedom Park and all that. But I said I couldn't believe so many people, so much trash was stowed out in such a little bit of space, because I thought it'd been looking pretty good, but I guess it wasn't as good as it looked. But anyway, now I want to give you how to keep the Grinch, Grease Grinch out of the bay, and some tips for the holidays. Avoid getting sink backups by pouring grease in a can and then freezing it, and then tossing it in the garbage. Scrape the leftovers into garbage or into a compost pile. And choose products by their packaging. And in other words, eggs in cardboard packages and not the styrofoam. Recycle right. You can check that out on a website, recycling disposal. You can look at online. And November 15th is recycle day. And you can, but first of all, we are going, this is, Clean County is going to celebrate the repair fair and recycling expo on Saturday, the 18th. And you can, it's from 9:00 to 1:00. And you can bring, tomorrow's a deadline on getting something repaired. And we're going to have sewing, small appliances, furniture and woodworking, bicycles, jewelry, and welding. The welding is, today was a deadline on that. But you can call tomorrow and maybe if you have something you want repaired or whatever. But we also want to have outside, that's going to be inside the cafeteria there at War Hill High School. But outside, they're going to have the shredding of paper, two brown bags or two banker boxes. And that's all free. And plastic bags, Alliance Club's going to be there to pick up any plastic wrapping or bags. We're going to collect tires so that they don't end up in the side of the road, and we have to pick them up next spring. So there would be that. There'll be donations, furniture, household items, anything like that. Restore is going to have a truck there. And Junk Luggers is going to collect anything e-waste, like computers or old phones or whatever like that. And Owens, Illinois is going to be there with the purple monster bin, that I call it, purple monster, to pick up glass only. And there's also going to be a Solus for souls. It's S-O-L-E-S for S-O-U-L-S. And that's clothing, shoes, and so forth, coats, whatever, that will be used to give to people all around, either here or around the world, as far as that goes. And I'm running out of time. But anyway, just don't flush anything down the toilet except tissue and your personal business, so that you have, so we don't have any backups for the holidays. And for Mr. Doug, he'd have to send somebody out. So anyway, I'm wishing, let's go phone-free, avoid using styrofoam cups and other products. And you can ask hrgreen.org. And thank you for your time, and happy holidays from the Clean County Commission.
Marco Sadad?
Welcome. I apologize for my bad handwriting.
That's all right.
My name is Marco Sardi. I'm a resident at 4008 Governor's Square. I'm a teacher at James Blair Middle School, and I'm also the president of WJCEA. I wanted to come tonight to congratulate the conclusion of a very eventful election season. And I want to extend my gratitude for this board for continuing their advocacy for our schools, and that I look forward as both a representative and advocate for our students, our families, and all of our staff who work at WJCC, that we look forward to having a productive relationship over this next year as we dive closer and closer towards the budgetary process. I know WJCC Schools has already put out several early surveys for staff on what their priorities are going to be for the budget. And as WJCEA has reached a majority for teachers for collective bargaining, I want to extend my gratitude towards the board in advance for understanding that this process over the next year or two will begin to look a little different on our end as staff and our students earn the right to have an additional voice in determining what are the big priorities for our school division. Obviously, this is a newer process for this locality, and it will look different here than it would in Richmond, or in Fairfax, or in the other places where they've begun or have already established this process. Given that Williamsburg, James City County Schools is a joint system with two different funding partners, and collective bargaining is with the school board, that will mean that you'll be hearing little less from me when it comes to the bargaining process, but a lot more when we reach a conclusion and we come to a contract and we come to a budgetary proposal, and it reaches your desk for approval. I know that this year we are trying to fund, and I fully support this from our administrative side, we're trying to fund extra pre-K centers to have their own building to consolidate a very thinned and stretched staff. Our pre-K population has exploded this year proportionally to other years, and we are down several pre-K staff as they are spread across multiple buildings. It's created a huge strain. One of my colleagues has 80 pre-K students that she has to handle by herself, which is not sustainable over the course of the next few years if we see anything close to this number with as few staff as we have. The pre-K buildings that we are trying to construct will allow those pre-K teachers to work in the same building, to share resources, and to enable them to have the support that they need to properly address our pre-K populations, which currently are spread across the whole division. So I urge you to support that when the capital improvement plan comes to your table for approval, and that that not be one of the things that would be cut if there have to be cuts made to any budgetary concerns. Thank you for your time, and I wish you a pleasant evening.
Thank you. All right. Any other speaker cards? Okay. We'll go ahead and close up public comment and move to consent calendar. Tonight's consent calendar consists of excavator replacement and Weesberg Landing, Inc. Revenue Bond Insurance. Is there any items on the consent counter anyone wishes to pull?
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the consent calendar.
Oh, please, sir.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Drysonhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Our PC rep tonight is Steve Rogers. Thank you for coming.
And our first public hearing, SUP-22-0017, Z-22-0002, and MP-22-002 at 4399 John Tyler Highway, Five Fork Self-Storage Facility. Paxton, how you doing today?
How are you doing?
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mr. Greg Davis has applied on behalf of Stein Investment Group to amend the adopted master plan and proffers for Five Forks at Governor's Grove, as well as for a special use permit, to permit a self-storage facility at 4399 John Tyler Highway, and to allow for a boundary line adjustment to utilize a portion of 4365 John Tyler Highway for the stormwater facilities. These parcels total 8.09 acres together, are zoned mixed use, and are designated mixed use and moderate density residential on the 2045 comprehensive plan. Both properties are inside the primary service area and are currently undeveloped. The proposed facility would be three stories, approximately 100,000 square feet, and include 700 storage units. The entrance for this project would be from John Tyler Highway, and traffic improvements would include an extension of the center-left turn lane on John Tyler Highway as well. At the October 4 regular meeting, the Planning Commission voted six to one to recommend approval of the applications to the Board of Supervisors subject to the proposed conditions. Since the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant revised proffer 4C to clarify the traffic improvements following discussions at the Planning Commission meeting. Staff also revised conditions 3 and 10 of the special use permit for the addition of the requirement of 50% of the additional plantings to be native species, and to revise the required forested open space to be used for credit towards the needed water quality. The last changes were revision to the amended master plan showing of the location for a sign and replacing an exhibit in the traffic impact analysis to show the correct one-building design the applicant has proposed. Staff finds this proposal to be consistent with the 2045 comprehensive plan overall, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the special use permit, amended master plan, and amended proffers subject to the proposed conditions and proffers. I am happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant is available as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Wait till after, hear from the applicant.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question in it? Could you talk a little bit about the stormwater management? Because I know this has been an area where there's been a problem of flooding over the years, not far down the road here, just to kind of make sure that this is something that's taken very seriously when it comes to the site planning process.
Yeah, absolutely. The applicant has worked with Stormwater, and Stormwater has given their okay for all of the designs and everything as proposed.
Any other questions? All right. Steve? Welcome, sir.
Welcome to, thank you so much. And I don't know if you recall the last time I got the opportunity to bring you something. It was like a squiggly can of controversial worms. But this particular application was really quite smooth sailing for us. The applicant made a very detailed, a very informed presentation showing exteriors of the proposed buildings and just what they had in mind. There were no public comments, either for There were no public comments either for or against the project. What we considered was a lot of applicant-provided data, which indicated that their facilities have thrived as a local, low-intensity neighborhood commercial use. And if I got this fact wrong, they can fix it when they speak, but it seemed that most of their business comes from about, from the residents in about a four-mile circumference of their facility. So it's a facility that would serve the actual people living next to it. What we liked was it requires a minimum of public utilities. It generates a diminutous waste stream. As long as the topography is left correct, the facility itself should not generate wastewater in the way we think of wastewater. There's not really a lot of faucets in this building. It also doesn't function as a traffic-inviting commercial use, such as shopping or an entertainment venue if ever put in the same spot. We looked at statistics on the low-intensity use of the facility in relation to vehicle trips per day. We're told they're going to average six or less. It's a pretty crowded street, so that low number was a positive for us. It should also generate low county services. Now, it was noted that allowing this facility to go in there would lessen the opportunity for what we think of as mixed-use opportunities, making our neighborhoods more walkable, making more, I guess, things for those of us who live next to it, which includes myself, to do. And there was also discussion that in the original master plan, it showed a 25,000-square-foot building, whereas this revised structure is 100,000-square-foot building. So everyone sat up. We also discussed the idea that 100,000 square feet of passive activity, meaning things sitting in storage, is quite different than a 25,000-square-foot building that has a lot of visitor intensive and action going on on the premises. We thought that was an important distinction where this passive storage is so drastically different than active commercial ongoing activity, meaning less traffic, less utility, less noise, a quieter buffer between that proposed use and the adjoining elementary school, which is nearby, Claret Bird Baker's right next to it. The applicant that evening agreed to amend their proposed buffer and planting conditions to include a minimum of 50% additional plantings to include Eastern Virginia native species. And on a roll call vote, the commission voted to approve the sup, the rezoning, and the master plan amendment with the attached proffers and with that modification to the wording about the plants. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, go ahead and open up the public speaking. And Gregory Davis, first speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Greg Davis from the James City County Law Offices of Kaufman and Cunnels. It's my pleasure to be here tonight before you, representing the applicant Stein Investment Group. With me are Mr. Jason Lynn Scott and Daniel Ginberg with Stein Investment Group. Howard Price is here on behalf of the project engineer AES Consulting. And my colleague Benny Zhang and I have worked together on the project for Kaufman and Cunnels. It's nice to follow such a good introduction from the Planning Commission. Thank you. Stein Investment Group is a third-generation family-owned company with more than 60 of these storage projects nationally. Been recognized by industry media as one of the top 20 owner-operators. That's not based on size, that's quality, based on inspections and Google feedback. Stein has projects under its Space Shop brand in either under development or in operation in Norfolk, Henrico, Hanover, and Glen Allen. And it's important for the board to know that Stein is a long-term owner. They don't build these and sell them. They'll operate them long-term. That's the model of the business. This conceptual layout, I hope, will be helpful to the board. You can see the 7-Eleven here at the corner at Five Forks and the convenience store across Route 5. And here's the Five Forks Cafe and the shops at Governor's Grove. This is the layout for the storage facility, which you've heard described earlier today. And then to the west, all of this property, all the way to Poutan Creek, will be preserved as open space in accordance with the already-approved master plan. Some conceptual views, which I know were in your board packet, show the architecture and the appearance of the project. I like showing you this because of the brick and the colonial interpretive architecture. This picture shows, it looks like it's three stories because this is downhill, right from the Five Forks intersection to Poutan Creek. And so at the low end of the site, there's that heightened foundation. But in fact, the project is a two-floor construction. This conceptual view helps you see, I think, that it won't tower over other structures in Five Forks. This is a view looking over the 7-Eleven down toward the storage facility on your left as you head west on Route 5. The Space Shop locations that I brought for you to look at tonight as examples include this one in suburban Atlanta, a brick construction, first-class operation. Here's another view. And I'll point out to the board the proximity of residential development to the Space Shop. That'll be a recurrent theme that I mentioned tonight. This is a location outside of Richmond, a little bit more urban-style architecture. You'll note the residential development nearby the project as well. These shots were taken soon after construction was completed and the landscaping is not leafed out, but an attractive structure. These architecturals are binding based on the special use permit conditions that the staff worked on with the applicant. And so you see, this is really two stories. To my point earlier, just the downhill topography causes that large foundation on the downhill side. I thought I'd show you this image because it's the back of the facility that would front the Claret Bird Baker parking lot. Bricking that facade is expensive. And yet, we worked closely with staff on this project and Five Forks Principles call for the architectural treatment to be consistent on all four sides of the building. So brick it, we will. A little background for you about the self-storage business these days. Self-storage is no longer a temporary holding use. This project will be a $10 or $15 million building, Class A, climate-controlled through all the spaces, and it's purpose-built. So this is not a structure that could be converted to offices or residences later. There's only one bathroom. The plumbing and the structural elements would not support conversion. This will be self-storage for the long haul with no outdoor storage of boats or vehicles and no rental of vehicles or whatnot operated. Storage is growing. It's now a neighborhood use, an extension of home. Folks are working remotely. They got to clean out a closet or an extra bedroom to work from. They're storing their Christmas decorations. I was at the self-storage the other day and they were storing Halloween decorations. Folks are putting the winter clothes there in the summer and their bike in the self-storage in the wintertime. It's almost like an extra closet space. The average lease term is expanding for these self-storage facilities as people treat them as a part of their home. We explained to the Planning Commission that Stein Investment Group's expertise in citing storage facilities means that they evaluate the use on a neighborhood basis. Folks want self-storage close by. And they evaluate that trade area by talking about how much housing is nearby, what's the density of the housing, the percentage of housing that is rental is an important driver, as are things like natural barriers and traffic patterns. In this case, there's not much self-storage if you think about it as you head into Charles City and there's not self-storage as you head down toward, say, Williamsburg Crossing. There is other storage available in the trade area. Ms. Brady runs a very nice operation just across the way at Five Forks. But our study of the market indicates that even with construction of the Space Shop, with this project approved, there's still 25% demand in the market for self-storage that's not met. It is just truly a robust market and the right location for self-storage. It's a low-intensity use. It's often located on the way to the grocery store or commercial centers so that folks can run errands and stop by the self-storage on the way. The facilities that Space Shop uses have a keypad access so they can tell you exactly how many people visit the facilities during the day. You have in your packet the community impact statement that shows more granular data. But the average visit for a facility of this size with Stein Investment Group is about 12 visits per day. It's just minimal traffic. And there's no demand on county services. The project generates no residents, no schoolchildren, no demand on parks and recreation, fire and rescue. Only have one bathroom in the entire facility, so it's not a big user of water and sewer. And I respectfully request or suggest to the board that you consider this use as compared to past requests for the site and what might come in the future. In 2009, a pharmacy with drive-through was proposed on this site and VDOT approved access on Ironbound Road. Now, that application was pulled. But if you think about possible future demands for this space, it'd certainly be retail, maybe office, medical office. And again, respectfully would suggest that those are big traffic generators compared to 12 visits per day. This is a nice, quiet transition for Five Forks. And we only got 12 visitors per day and yet, we did a full traffic impact analysis for the site. And we chatted with staff and there was some concern about traffic management at Route 5. And so as a part of the application, we've proffered to improve the center-left turn lane to extend it. Now that left turn lane stops in here. So there's no stacking for entrance into the Five Forks Cafe or the convenience store at the corner or the shops here where Amory Music is located. This application will involve a proffer extending that turn lane here to serve the entrance to the Space Shop as well as to provide stacking from eastbound vehicles and westbound vehicles. And the application makes it clear there'd be no access on Ironbound Road. There's an emergency access there, fire and rescue, but it'd be gated. It wouldn't have traffic onto Ironbound Road, which was a concern of staff and VDOT. As you heard very articulately tonight, the Planning Commission supported this application. I think largely because of the process. This applicant took advantage of the land use structures that the county has in place, began with a conceptual plan review more than a year ago. Worked closely with staff to conform to the Five Forks Principles and the new comprehensive plan. That includes 50-foot buffers on all sides in addition to that open space. If the staff had a negative comment in passing, it was the point that the master plan in place today approved 25,000 square feet of commercial use on the site we're talking about tonight. Formal mobile home park being redeveloped. And the question was, is that, is the self-storage facility an increase in the intensity of the use at Five Forks? And I would suggest to the board, no. This is redevelopment. $10 or $15 million project will be a taxpayer in James City County. Yeah, it'll have more square footage, but not more intensity. I've talked about the traffic. It's quiet use, doesn't make any noise, rarely anybody around, no security issues. And we've actually increased the amount of open space in Poutan Creek protection over what was approved in the existing master plan. So, Mr. Chairman, with thanks for the opportunity to address your board tonight, I'll close by asking that the board follow the Planning Commission's recommendation and vote approval of the project. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the board members may have.
Questions for the applicant?
Well, first I want to say thank you for saying something about Ms. Brady because we did hear from Ms. Brady, given some comments that were made at the Planning Commission, that there was not a conditioned space because that is something that they do offer at their airtight and that there were no elevators and something like that. So she was not necessarily, from what I gather from her letter, not coming against this project, but just wanted to make sure that her, the reputation of her business was not mislined in any way or that there wasn't anything that was not true out there. So I do appreciate you saying that.
Yes, ma'am.
I think as I've shared with you and Mr. Zhang, I have received some questions regarding traffic, which I appreciate you addressing this evening, that there was a current. I talked with Mr. Holt today. There has been a current traffic study that has been done. I also shared with you some concerns that I received from citizens regarding materials and what was going to be stored there. So I'm hoping that you might be able to address that as well.
Be happy to, Ms. Larson, yeah. The concern that you raised dealt with whether there would be hazardous materials stored in the self-storage. And the answer is no. Stein's had extensive experience with this. First of all, the lease is prohibited. Secondly, there's extensive video surveillance cameras so that the management can watch what's coming into the storage facilities and who's bringing it in. In addition, this Space Shop has management training protocols that are developed over these 60 units. They've learned lessons the hard way. And one of their protocols that I think you'll find interesting is that the manager's required to walk every hall in the facility twice a day. And that's where they found they pick up on spills or odors or people moving things in and out that maybe shouldn't be there or trying to spend the night there. But in response to your question, I inquired of my client, have you had a lot of problems with hazardous materials? And they said, no. At one time, in all these units, they had somebody who was storing tires there. That was the most hazardous material and they evicted them. Had to pay to take the tires away and dispose of them properly. So it has not been a big issue in that self-storage business, Ms. Larson.
Thank you. The other thing, I just feel, I appreciate that the keypad entry. But as someone who sat at early voting for 45 days, there is traffic going in and out of storage units. So I don't want to be, but I don't think it's going to be the type of traffic that would come into a drugstore or a medical office. I agree with you. But we Americans seem to have a lot of stuff and so we seem to be going, making trips. So I think that the additional, the turn lane will definitely help with that. But if it was only eight to 10 trips a day, I must say you'll be coloring me surprised just because it just seems like there's more. And I know that we also got from airtight, they did send a copy of their keypad entry for one of their days and it was more than that. I think those are the main questions that I have right now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, any other speaker cards? All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment and look for the board for discussion, direction, or motion.
I don't think I would add too much more than what I've said. I hope that the, I hope that the pictures that are showing with the buffers and everything, I hope that that really comes to pass. I don't want to, you know, I want Five Forks since it's a change in the master plan. It's, I really want to make sure that we do what we say we're going to do and we don't do any type of ISO or anything like that to the residents that live there. I've had residents reach out to me. I want to be very clear. There was also a question that was raised about the historic, possible historic nature. And talking with Mr. Holt today, there will be an archaeological study that is required. So we will, they will be doing that and there won't be any building until that is completed. So, and I do appreciate that all the work that the Planning Commission did, staff did, and the applicant as well. So I'm just going to hope for the best. Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Right, motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, if we can be certain that it's a motion to approve both the resolution and an ordinance, you have both in front of you.
For both?
For both.
Sadwell?
For both.
Motion for approval for both.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next, the number two, SUP-22-00273426, North Riverside Drive, Family Subdivision. The applicant has requested a deferral until the December 12, 2023 board meeting. And so if I don't have, is everybody in agreement to allow a deferral for this project to the December meeting? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing then. And I'll ask anybody, if you speak tonight, you won't be able to speak at the December meeting. But if you really want to speak tonight, that's fine, too, we want to hear your voice. But I just want to let that be known, we'll leave the public comment open so that it continues into the December meeting. Is there anybody, we have any speaker cards?
No.
All right, we'll go ahead and leave that public hearing open. And we have, can I have a motion for postponement until the December 12?
So move.
So move. Roll call, please, sir. Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
All right, number three, cell tower lease at 101 Mountains Bay Road. Liz, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you, it was a resolution authorizing county administrator to enter into a lease amendment extending the term of a cell tower lease on county property. The cell tower is located actually just right out here. And the amendment will extend the lease to December 2028. The tenant will pay the county a monthly rent of $3,300, increasing 3% each year. And staff recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
The only question I had was, is that in comparison, how is that lease, is that a good lease amount or?
I would say that's comparable to what we're getting in other cell tower leases. This rent payment is actually increasing by about $1,000 from the current payment.
Could I say it was about, over the five-year period of extension, about a quarter of a million dollars?
Yes, correct.
And is there any opportunity for co-location that's not being utilized presently, or is it already used for co-location?
There is a term in the lease that requires payment for co-location. I don't have the details of what we're getting paid right now, but I could get that to you.
Thank you.
All right, then, thank you. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any speaker cards? None, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, look for the board for direction, discussion, or decision.
Move the approval.
All right, move for approval, roll call, please, sir. Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
All right, next, number four, utility easement at 191 Clark Lane. Liz, back up again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to introduce to you Nathaniel Blevins. Nathaniel lives in Extern in the county attorney's office. He's been working with us since August. He's a second-year law student at William &amp; Mary, and he is receiving course credit for his work done in our office. He's researched a variety of topics this past semester, including questions related to the county's Chesapeake Bay ordinance, the noise ordinance, and the golf cart ordinance. He's answered questions from our first responders about blood transfusions and temporary detention orders. He's also researched, does some research in the DAM Safety Act. So we've given him a lot of topics, and he's provided us with some really exceptional work. But he's here tonight to present to you a proposed utility easement.
Is it fair to ask him questions about any of those topics?
Oh, sure, yeah.
And the mortuary.
Start with blood transfusion.
Welcome.
I'm in for it, all right. Good evening, board. I'm here for you to present a natural gas easement requested by the Virginia Natural Gas Company from the county. It is for the construction and maintenance of a natural gas transmission line across property owned by the county located at 191 Clark Lane depicted above. The Virginia Natural Gas is prepared to pay a sum of $2,972 in addition to the $10 of nominal consideration for the easement. Now, the rights included under this easement include the right to lay, construct, operate, and maintain one or more lines of underground pipes or conduits together with all valves, regulators, meters, attachments, equipment, accessories and appurtenances desirable in connection to that purpose, whether underground or above ground, all for the purpose of transporting or distributing natural gas or any other gases or substances which can be transported through a pipe or conduit. The company will have this right in perpetuity and can assign and transfer it without limitation. The company will have at all times the right to keep the right-of-way clear of all buildings, structures, and vegetation, except the county can still place fences, patios, paving, walkways, and movable lawn buildings on top. Also, they can place electric, telephone, or other utility lines. However, Virginia Natural Gas can cross or cut through any of these encumbrances so long as they pay for the repair to any damage that they may cause. And the Virginia Natural Gas will also restore as nearly as practicable the surface of the land within the easement to the condition existing immediately prior to construction of any of the facilities mentioned prior. And they will have the continuing right to inspect, rebuild, remove, repair, or relocate any of the, anything associated with transportation of their natural gas through these pipes. And the county cannot excavate or place fill material on the right-of-way. They can't place septic tanks or lay drain fields on the right-of-way. And that about sums it up. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Now's the time to give them all the questions.
So is this, Mr. Blevins, thanks for your explanation of this. Is this related to the county's involvement in a development project for housing? Or is it just something that's completing an area that wasn't currently served by them?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I can get back to you on that.
All is saying no.
Any other questions?
Well, actually, I gave an alternative there. Is it just that this is an area that hasn't had service before that's being connected now?
Chairman, members of the board, it's just a general extension for their system. It's not related to the work that we're hoping to do in the area.
So this isn't, but it is basically a new connection to extend the service to area that they?
Correct, it'll tie into the existing infrastructure that's here. They're actually going to bore underneath the railroad, bore underneath Richmond Road in both directions, and actually will connect up on the whole other side of Richmond Road where they'll tie into the existing infrastructure.
That gives some redundancy to the system there?
Sure it does, yeah.
Yeah.
Hard to do those CSX crossings, as you can imagine.
Any other questions?
Anything about DAM safety? You can't give us the answer, though.
Any others? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Any speaker cards? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, look for the board for motion, direction, decision.
I'll move the approval, the easement.
For approval? Roll call, please, sir. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, consolidation of government center proposal. Brad?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Kinsman, Mr. Purse. I'm here this evening to talk a little about our consolidated government center. As you all are aware, we've been discussing this topic for quite a few years now. And about two, two and a half years ago, we started looking at the costs associated with the new government facility compared to what it would cost to continue to stay where we are, add on, do the things we need to do to continue to add space as the county grows and as staff grow. If you recall, through that study, the pricing came out to be pretty similar. Whether we built a new government center or continued in our same location, there really wasn't going to be that big of a cost difference. During those discussions, we also paid to do a space needs assessment to find out exactly how much space the county would need. And while we were working through a lot of these discussions and processes, we received an unsolicited proposal from Henderson Incorporated and Gilbane. That proposal came in in December of 2022. At that point, we as I find my clicker, there it is. There we go. We followed the PPA guidelines in regard to an unsolicited proposal. We formed a working group with the members listed below. I came to you all in a closed session, and we discussed that proposal. The working group looked at the unsolicited proposal, made a recommendation to you, the board, to accept that proposal, which you did. We were then required to advertise and received one competing proposal from Clancy Thays and David Nice Group. I listed there the members of the working group, so you can see. Once we received that second competing proposal, we also reached out to Jim Yatzick. He's the vice president and service executive with MBP Consulting Firm to help us with that evaluation process. Two proposals that we did receive, and I refer to the first as Henderson-Gilbane, the second as Clancy and Thays, just a list there of some of the partners that they had incorporated into their proposals, just so you get an idea of who's involved in this process. That led us into the whole evaluation of those proposals. And I've asked Jim Yatzick to come tonight and talk a little bit about how we evaluated those two proposals as he's a much better expert at this than I am. So, Mr. Yatzick, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Reinheimer, members of the board, chairman. Jim Yatzick, construction management consultant, we have an office located in Newtown. Worked on over 14 projects that have been delivered with PPEA. So it's a process that we're very familiar with. And at this point, it's been tried and tested, a lot of projects across the state have used PPEA. So I want to talk just a little bit about the process that we employed. The county has established guidelines for doing PPA delivery, so we want to make sure that those were followed very closely. So we got the concept proposals, the conceptual proposals came in. Initially, the working group set about reviewing those. Each proposal generated about 100 questions that went back to the proposing firms. Some big-picture questions, also some questions that got into a lot of detail. We received the feedback back from the both proposing teams. We also had those teams come in and give oral presentations to us. It's important for the county to get a good feel for who might eventually be their partners on a very important project for the county. Also, a good chance to ask questions and have questions answered. We also furnished a report as part of our task with the county to do a lot of side-by-side comparisons. We did a lot of matrices to do, try to get to apples-to-apples comparisons between the two proposals, which feature a lot of different components. So our goal was really to kind of ferret out the differences. We also identified some concerns, some possible gaps. And those were, those questions that we had went back to the proposers to answer. So there's a lot of back and forth that went on during that part of the process. We then moved into what was called the detailed phase. The PPA allows you to go into detailed phase with one, both, or none of the proposers. We felt that both proposals were so strong that we wanted to go into detailed phase consideration with both of the teams. This was, again, some more detailed diving into the proposal components. One of the things that the county wanted to do at this point was look at what we're calling a phased-in approach. So there is a parking garage that was featured in both of the original proposals. So we asked the proposers to set that aside. So that's what we're referring to there as the phased-in approach. So the current proposal before us does not have a parking garage. We kind of consider that part of a future plan. So a lot of back and forth again, and eventually the county got to a place where it wanted to select one team and is making the recommendation to go with one of those teams. I don't want to steal the thunder from Mr. Reinheimer. I think that's going to come up in a slide in a minute. But that was just the process that we followed over the last few months. I do want to say a few words before I turn it over to Mr. Reinheimer just about PPA in general. PPA is essentially a design-build-delivery. A lot of what gets done for government projects at local, state, federal level is often what's referred to as the traditional design-bid-build. And I think everyone is familiar with the process, that's why we call it traditional delivery. An architect is hired, an architect designs documents 100%, those documents go out for bid, contractor puts in a bid. That's that traditional process. Design-build, you're only hiring one entity, so that's what we would be doing here. We'd be hiring one entity to do design and construction. And as with anything, there's advantages, disadvantages. So some of the advantages with design-build, there's a lot of efficiency in this process. You're not going out with multiple procurements. You're doing one procurement, which is happening right now. It's a one-stop shop to someone who is your designer and your contractor. And then there's efficiencies built throughout the process. They are able to do early release of materials since you already have your contractor onboard before the design is 100% completed. If there's materials that we're concerned, there's going to be some inflationary factors. They can early release things like steel or mechanical components. So with some of the problems that we're having right now in the industry with supply chain, we're avoiding some of those risks that you might see. So the design-build brings some of those efficiencies. Another particular thing about PPA is it allows for a qualifications-based process. If you're doing the traditional design-bid-build, it's a, you're getting the low bidder. And that generally is the, not necessarily a not-good contractor, but it's usually the contractor that has had to strip the most management and oversight over their bid in order to get the work. And that's often really not what you want, is someone who's going to be doing the least oversight for your project. So really isn't a feature of design-build. We've had the opportunity to review proposals based on the qualifications that were proposed. And both teams very highly qualified, and they've right-sized the management as this proposal. So we feel like this is going to have a very high level of quality. Also, on the, just one last thing to mention. The design-bid-build process, the owner, in this case, in the county, is at risk for the designers' errors and omissions. So we've all heard about change orders, change orders for problems of design. You aren't going to have that issue with design-build, you're hiring one firm. They're not going to be able to come to you and say, we've made mistakes, you need to pay for them. Those are things that they have to absorb since they are the designer and the builder. So that's another benefit. And then just lastly, advantages, disadvantages for everything. I think time-wise, this is going to be a faster project delivery for the county by going to design-build. I think you're getting better quality with being able to do a qualities-based selection. It's not necessarily the low cost because of those things I mentioned. Some of that risk is now being shifted over to the design builder. You'd be paying for a little more quality, a little more management. So I think over time, those things wash themselves out, but maybe the upfront sticker price is not the lowest price to do it as design-build.
Jim? Is there any questions for Jim at this point on this? Anybody have anything?
No, I just would say I've known him a very long time, many school projects, and I really value his opinion. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim, appreciate it.
Okay, some of these things we've talked about before, you know, the approximate square footage of the new consolidated government centers, somewhere in the area of 165,000 square feet. We did look at the multiple versus single-building layout, and those are some of the changes that we had asked from the original Henderson-Gilbane proposal, which is what Clancy and Thays did submit. This would consolidate the offices at Mountains Bay, Ironbound Road Buildings, Social Services, and some other county offices. You know, ultimate goal there, just having a more consolidated, centrally-located government center where citizens can come for a one-stop type of service delivery. You know, working here in the government center the way it is currently, it's pretty regular that we're giving people directions on where to go. Where they're frustrated because they went from one location to another location, this, I think, would make it much easier for citizens and is definitely more centrally-located. And we did also talk a little bit about that phased-in approach. I know when we originally discussed this, we weren't discussing phased-in approach. A lot of what's going on with the schools and the potential need for an additional middle school has kind of caused us to look back and say, maybe we should phase it in instead of coming up with all that expense right up front until we know for sure what's happening with the schools. Includes school administration as well. So the working group's recommendation, and I do want to say that we all felt that both groups did a great job. Submitted very good proposals. They all had a lot of local flavor to them, which we really put a lot of value on. They all had a lot of local flavor to them, which we really put a lot of value on, and we were very pleased with both proposals. But ultimately, it was a unanimous decision by the entire working group and our private consultant to select Henderson-Gilbane to move forward to the negotiation phase to reach an interim agreement. Some of the reasons we felt like their proposal was better suited for us, the work history and the relationship that they have, they've worked together for years on multiple projects, which was very important. The other group did not provide that. Little better refinement and a little better-developed proposal, and again, the value of those local firms. Me being around for a while, I was here when we built the law enforcement center, and it was a different contractor, but having that local contractor, they're building a building that's going to be there for a long time, and they take a lot of pride in that. And we see that in some of our local contractors and the work that they do. So we thought that was very important. Prior positive history, you know, our working group has staff that worked with these groups in the past, and we're very pleased with the work that they've done and the relationships that they have. And again, that was a unanimous recommendation. These are some conceptual designs that had been provided previously. This is the view coming off of Route 199 if you were going westbound onto Long Hill Road. So the rec center would kind of be right behind what you're looking at right there, an idea of how it might look for traffic out there on Long Hill Road. And this is the design for the layout on the land, and you can see the future parking garage in the top, and then the future school board administrative offices towards the bottom, and how it connects well with the rec center. In the past, I've shown you some other photos, some conceptual photos. Certainly, some of those things may change, but this is an overall conceptual design of that layout. So the next steps before you this evening is a resolution which would authorize the county administrator, or is designated, enter into the negotiation phase with Henderson-Gilbane to work towards an interim and/or comprehensive agreement. The interim agreement is what we're seeking right now. Comprehensive agreement is something that is required through the PPEA to come back to the board. So before there is a final decision on this exact building and what it's going to be, that will come back before the board again. If you all move this forward this evening, we'll also begin that process of soliciting input from the public, from stakeholders, from county staff, and from you. I'm sure that will include some tours of other facilities and things, so you get an idea of what you want to see in your next government center. Any questions for me or Mr. Yatzik? Questions?
The only question that I have is that the school piece worries me a tad, because we are, we may be six months from a decision, and the school admin building is in the city. So if the decision by the city is to split, then what? And how quickly do we then move? And I mean, I've been very open. I'm not really in favor of a separate building. And I'm also, you know, with, as it is now, I believe that ninety percent of that cost falls to us. So, and the location of this, I think, would, I would hope, would answer a concern about if the school system were joint, it's convenient to both the city of Williamsburg and James City County residents. So I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but I do want to put that out there, that is a concern of mine. I don't know how forward-thinking that is to, how far do we push it down the road? What happens if we've got to find a place for James City County admin for schools?
Yes, ma'am. And we've talked about that, we've considered that. That is absolutely something we'll be considering as we move forward.
I guess I had a couple of questions. One is about the phasing. I think Ms. Larson's raised the issue very well. You know, if we are thinking at some point that we want to do a parking garage, then, you know, to me, it seems like it would be undesirable to pave a lot of this property for a non-garaged situation, when you're actually going to be able to consolidate much of that later on. So the phasing sort of makes me curious about how that would operate in terms of, you know, who would do, is that something that the same partners would do, or is it something that you would go through this whole process again? Not quite sure.
And I think we would end up having to go through some sort of process again. It may not be the same process, but I want to pull the diagram up. So where the future parking garage is placed right now, I don't believe the intention right now, and again, this could certainly change. We haven't gotten to that phase yet, where we're making these definitive decisions, that that would not be necessarily parking right up front. We plan to use the rec center parking as kind of the overflow to be able to satisfy some of the requirements for a number of parking spaces. So I don't believe the parking garage would be a paved, empty area right now that's just sitting there. But I, again, that's something we would figure out kind of as we move forward, but that's something we certainly take into consideration.
I guess I was really looking at it from the other perspective, that you might not need to pave all that area that's currently shown as paved if the parking garage were done concurrently with the rest of the project.
Now, the amount of parking spaces by zoning requirements for a building of that size far exceeds what's pictured there in the, just the government center side. That's why we're utilizing the rec center to satisfy some of that requirement. Because you all, you all are here, you see it, we're here every day. The amount of parking we have right here is certainly sufficient. It's just certain times for certain events when we get a lot of folks here. You know, a board meeting over something that's controversial draws a lot of attention, that's when we need that additional parking, and that's when we'd use that, that type of overflow.
Members of the Board, I will say, the interim agreement, we don't have to do an interim agreement. If the proposal submitted was exactly what we wanted to build, we would come to you and say, "This is what we want to build, let's approve that." That's not where we are. These proposals have been submitted to us based on your public discussion that occurred, really, this time last year. Doesn't really have your input as to what do you want it to look like, what's the schematics in the building, where is the parking, do you do the building together, do you do two separate buildings? The interim agreement will give you the opportunity to answer all those questions before you do that comprehensive agreement. And so I would defer to Brad and Jim, if I say anything wrong, to correct it, but we will have parts in that interim agreement that will let you know the price. If you want to know the price of parking deck today versus a year and a half from now or two years from now, we will have that kind of information. The parking layout and all those things, we haven't gotten our input. So that is for us. When Brad says we're going to the public, to our staff, and to you, we have a lot of work to do in the next probably three to six months to answer those questions. What do we really want it to look like? This is their proposal to us, based on limited discussion with the community. And so the interim agreement allows us to then come to a price to pay them, to take us through that process and get to a real price. I don't know, this time next year, we'd be probably optimistic, but sometime in the next twelve to eighteen months, of here's what it costs to really build the building that you want to build and the community wants us to build. So that's the interim agreement phase that we're asking you to approve for us this evening.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What's the process of determining when this actually occurs, when the project would actually go forward, and how does that relate to the pricing of the project?
Yeah, that's a great question. The interim agreement, we're required to come to an interim agreement within thirty days of this public hearing. There's no time period right now set, as far as I know, for the comprehensive agreement. So those things are kind of all in flux. I wish I could give you a definitive answer on that, but I just can't give you that answer.
Mr. Wilson, in the next thirty days, we ought to have in the interim agreement those milestones of when we're doing things, right? We're doing this, this kind of month, this is happening here. And my experience with the recreational sports facility has been, we started having monthly updates with the contractors as it got further along, right? We did some site visits, we put them on a direction. As they started going through that design process, we were meeting with them very regularly, so we were involved in part of that. And I would anticipate we'll do something similar to that here as well. So with the interim agreement, we ought to be able to provide you that timeline of when you'd have a real number, but it will be a twelve- to eighteen-month timeframe, I believe, before you'll have that back. But we'll know that in the next thirty days.
Yeah, the interim agreement will provide a rough project schedule of what we believe the project will, how it will follow. Other questions?
All right. I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and look for any speaker cards. We have any speaker cards?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And before we discuss and all that, I would, I want to, you know, give us time to discuss if anyone wants to discuss, but I'd like to move it forward when we get to that point.
I was going to ask you if you wanted to move the motion.
Yes. So any discussion before I move the motion forward?
I'm just going to say very, very simply that I'm still kind of...
Ms. Howard?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. All right, board considerations, request to establish a conditional permit use and to exceed the minimum structure size for a event facility and a conservation easement at 2589 Greensprings Road and 3516 Mott Lane. The applicant has notified staff that they wish to withdraw this item at this time. So I just wanted to read it through for the record and make sure that everyone knows that that has been withdrawn at this time. So now we'll move into board requests and directives.
Yes, Mike?
Well, I'm glad to see we all made it back.
Yes, I'm glad you all did.
Good. A group of us have been at the Virginia Association of Counties Annual Conference, and we learned a great deal. We got to talk with people from all over the state and hear about what they're doing and share things that we're doing, and just wanted to give a shout out to Mr. Stevens, Ms. Larson, for representing us well at a discussion about tourism in rural areas, and they did a great job. So thank you for representing well. Appreciate it. Your Board of Supervisors is constantly being educated and educated well, so thank you for the opportunity.
And I just wanted to mention that I was privileged to be asked to speak at the Patriots Colony on Friday, the tenth, for their Veterans Day ceremony, and it was a very impressive gathering of veterans that we have in our community there. And the senior veteran was a young woman of 100 years.
Wow.
World War II veteran. So we were really honored to be in the presence of all those folks, so.
I just wanted to mention that along with a number of my colleagues on the board, I attended our celebration of business and had the great opportunity to recognize two of our fine businesses with the Founder's Award, a new award to replace the Captain John Smith Award that had been previously provided. And also attended the Virginia Association of Counties Annual Meeting and found the presentations to be quite interesting and valuable. I managed to attend the sessions on the budget and on the energy future of Virginia, with a lot of emphasis on the question of data centers, an issue that I'd asked the board earlier to ask staff to begin thinking about in terms of what we might have to keep in mind if we are approached on that question of whether or not to permit data centers. And in addition, I would also point out that we had a meeting of the High Growth Coalition at that session, which went well as we start to think about our legislative package for the General Assembly session coming up. And then finally, apparently, there was some activity last Tuesday that involved a significant number of county residents, and I just want to thank all those who were involved in staffing Election Day and all the citizens who turned out to vote early or late or provisionally or in any other way for their demonstrated commitment to our democratic process.
Thank you for that. I would also just add that Supervisor McGlinnan and I attended our school liaison meeting. And just as a reminder, we will have four new school board members come January, so it's imperative that, you know, with our, in our joint meeting, I believe it's already scheduled for March, that, you know, we make sure that we start, that's going to be quite a learning curve, I think. That's quite a turnover for your school board. So, but we discussed the preschool center, which, God willing, and the creek don't rise, at some point, will get off the ground here, but did talk about operating costs and that type of thing, and I'm sure Mr. Stevens will give us an update on that. He has it in his Friday notes, but I'm sure we'll talk about that as we move into the budget. Celebration of Business, I want to thank our Economic Development Department. I thought they did a great job, and our EDA for their support of that. And great, I thought we had really great workshops at VACO. But another learning curve that we need to really be aware of is our General Assembly, which is going to have quite a few new members, and especially our area, too. We're, you know, we've had Senator Normant that has represented us for quite a long time, who's a James City County resident, and we are going to now have a state senator that lives outside of our area, so it's going to be imperative upon us to make sure that we talk with Senator McDougall and let him know about our county as we move forward. And congratulations to all of those that were successful last Tuesday, and we're ready to welcome a new colleague come January, Supervisor-elect Noel.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just mention also that Ms. Larson has moved into the position of President-elect of VACO, which is a great honor for the county and certainly a recognition of her dedication to the county issues all across the Commonwealth.
Well, there, I normally just kind of skip over what the things that I do, and I've had a couple people say, "Well, do you do anything?" And so I said, "Well, I'll do a few things." And they said, "Well, we know." And so I'll just give you a few things that, since the last meeting, we've been, or I've been doing, and with some of our other members as well. And before I start, congratulations on your wins, yours, John's. I know you're retired, and yours over here. Congratulations on everybody for winning, but also thank everybody who ran, who spent the time and the effort. We know what it's about. We know what effort goes in to trying to get a position. It's very tough. Whether you won or didn't win, congratulations, and thank you for being part of this great nation that we have and the ability to run. We had a Service Authority meeting, and we'll find out a little bit more about that and about with some homeowners at our December meeting, and I'll kind of hold that right now, because that'll be a nice little thing. Fireboat tour, we went on the fireboat tour, and Brian Harris took us on a tour, the County Administrator, Assistant County Administrator Chief, and Ruth and I all went out on the fireboat tour and had a great time and enjoyed that very much, and got to play out on the river for a little bit and see what unique boat that we have right now in James City County. And I'm telling you, it's well worth every penny that's put into that boat and what can be done with it. Went to the mayors and chairs, I was held with the county administrator, and I was held over in York County. Had a meeting with David Coe and Kara Cook and go over a few things that they're doing. Kenny Lamb, Fire Investigator, has moved to Williamsburg. We're wishing well in Williamsburg. Sorry to see him go. Went to the going-away party for Kenny, and we'll miss him here in James City County. I remember when he started, and he came up to the volunteer fire station in Tawana, and we said, "You know, you'd be better to serve where you live in James City County," and sent him to Station Three, and a career started, and now look at him. He's moved up so, so well and such a good guy. Election Day, congratulations again, and what a great run you all did on election on the seventh. We had a ribbon-cutting at the Williamsburg Fire Department. And most of us were there as well, and a ribbon-cutting. We left there and went to, soon as we left the Williamsburg Fire Department, ribbon-cutting, then we ran right over and did the ribbon-cutting. You spoke in your district there on the fishing pier, the Chickamae Riverfront Park, which was very good.
I really appreciate that you wrote that down, because it was, I think I was in a little bit of a blur that day, so thank you.
You had a lot on you.
Yeah.
HR tech, we did the bands and the pre-pricing for that, and the HR tech bands and the pricing wrap-up, and we ended up putting bands out there and have saved a lot of money for the Commonwealth and for our region. And our tax, I was talking to Kevin today, our tax... Commonwealth and for our region, and our tax, I was talking to Kevin today, our tax on the sales tax and the gas tax were at 63 million, and with what we saved in our bonds and all this year was 64 million. That's incredible, where if we didn't have the leadership we have in that group looking for those extra, we doubled what we were going to have, and so hats off to Kevin and the entire HR-TAC group. The 22nd Annual Business, that was a great thing, wonderful event, loved everything about it. Veterans Day, Jim, thank you for your service, Brad, thank you for your service, I hope I'm not missing anyone, and your service, yes. I thought I got it just in the last moment, so don't want to miss anybody, but, you know, thank you for your service and the veterans and the community and everything you do, and everything you've done to protect us. Had a groundbreaking up in New Kent for the last section of I-64, so that's going real well, and also this year is the 75th anniversary of the James City Bruton Volunteer Fire Hall, so it's, and something's coming from us as well for that too, but those are just a few things since the last meeting, and every now and then I'll give them out, no need to tell them too much, it looks like you're bragging. So, County Administrator for four.
Yes, sir, Chair members of the board, just a reminder again, the Clean County Commission is hosting the Repair Fair and Recycling Expo this Saturday, November 18th, 9:01 at War Hill High School, it's on our website, but also for more information, residents could call 757-259-5375, again, 259-5375 for more information. We're also started our leaf, I guess, disposal options for our residents, you can bring them to our Jolly Pond Convenience Center and drop them off, anytime the convenience center is open, residents are allowed to bring them free of charge, they can bring them in bags, truck beds, trailers, we do ask that they're covered so they don't blow away getting to us, but it's free if you bring them to us, commercial lawn services are not allowed to bring their leaves to us, they have to make other accommodations. If you have questions, again, our information on our website or this number is 757-565-0971, 565-0971, and we do start the neighborhood pickups December 1st, we do it as we've done sort of one neighborhood each time and through the month of December, and calling that number, you can find out when your neighborhood is included.
Berkeley and Roberts kick it off.
I think you do, yes, sir. And then finally, I do want to recognize our video services team, again, we have numerous, I continue to say, a really high-quality staff, we put out a news relief in the last week or two, where they had won six awards and recognized nationally for their efforts here, and again, of those, their first-place award for public education with operating budgets of $200,000 to $400,000, so that's competing with some fairly extensive programs out there that we did take home first place in that with the story of the 3D-printed house, and I just want to congratulate all of our staff, and this month particularly, our video service team of Mitchell, Chris, and John, really appreciate their efforts, so thank you for letting me share.
Yeah.
They're excellent.
And they're probably watching us tonight.
Maybe.
All right, is that everything?
That's it.
All right, the, we don't have a closed session tonight, and since we have somebody that's only going to be here for a couple more meetings, maybe she would do the adjournment until 1:00 PM on November 28, 2023, for a business meeting.
I'm moved.
So, roll call, please.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Motion carries.
For adjourn.